Time being six o'clock, I will call the meeting to order with a pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Joe?
Here.
Dan?
Here.
Gary?
Here.
Don?
Here.
Jerry? Here. At this time, is there any reason for any of the commissioners to abstain for a financial or a non-financial conflict of interest?
I have none.
No.
No.
And I have none. Item number four, approval of the agenda. Are there any additions to the agenda or corrections?
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Agenda is approved. Public comments, thank you. Dan?
I think I did. I had a public comment.
Rob Kay?
That's me.
Well, first of all, I'm sorry to be addressing this and wasting our time here today in the thing, but today, in the last couple of days, I've received a multitude of emails from Gary Swenson. The first one I'm going to read, it's to Rob, Robert Nielsen, who would be the paper, and the subject line says, "Forward: Mistreatment of Dogs by Muslims: Mass Shooting YouTube." And it says Rob, so it'd be Rob Nielsen. The reason I left executive session on Thursday so abruptly was because Rob Kay, state's attorney, was taping, or he says tapping me when I spoke. I'm guessing he means taping, but it's tapping. "Rob threatened me just before the meeting shortly after I exposed him for not coming to a county commission meeting on Facebook. After threatening me, he said, 'You're not above the law.' I wish you could see his face."
Let's read.
And I know we're all in executive session, nothing happened. I don't even talk to the individual, Gary Swenson. Never have I said anything to him regarding any of this stuff. Never was that comment ever made, he puts in there. "You're not above the law." Never said it to him. I've never said it to anybody. I don't even know what that means, "not above the law." I'm not even sure how that is interpreted. And then he says, I think then he has another one. "Like I said, Rob Clemish, attorney, threatened me prior and was tapping me in Thursday's executive session, that's why I left," as the paper states, "on Friday during the bridge discussion. I said nothing to Gary, made no comments to him, never have I said any of that stuff to him." And I know, the commission knows, I'm talking to the paper and everybody else here to Gary. Why he says these things, I know we know Gary. I'm not stating, I'm stating the obvious of me stating anything. The phone calls I received on this. And then I got another email, and it was, and you guys probably got that one too, and it had drones on the top.
And it had?
And I think, just let me grab it. This is an email from Gary Swenson. Right now, he sends so many emails, I don't even print them anymore. I take pictures of a screen, send it to myself, and put it in his file. That's how crazy this is on what he's sending out. This one here, "People need to know, we either kill them or they, or we kill them here, no other choice." This is what he sends, and I'm even sorry to show you, you can't see it very well, but it's a charred body on fire. There's pieces missing on these persons. These are horrible pictures. I don't get why anybody would send them. It's hard to see, but it's a burnt leg with charred members of them, and he's sending these out to people, and I'm getting phone calls asking him to stop, and why are they sending these to me? I don't know. Here's his list of what he's sending out. It's amazing. Look what he did, what he sent out to something that didn't even come close to happening. Here's his list of what he sends out. It's the craziest thing. I probably spend a half an hour to 45 minutes a day addressing, looking at Gary Swenson emails that I feel sorry for the guy. I guess I can't really be upset. Let's pretend like everything he said in there was true. I don't, don't really care. Doesn't mean anything to me. The interesting thing is, he's just making stuff up, and he keeps doing it. I don't even know how to address. And again, to say he's not above the law, or whatever comment he made, I have no idea what that means. I don't know. Must mean something. And then him saying, "I'm retaliating against him regarding missing a meeting." Fine, I missed a meeting, said I'm sorry, said it over there, I apologize. I've never made a comment to Gary regarding the meeting, his comments, anything he said. Nothing. Just kind of a sad statement there. I'm sorry to bring it up, and I'm sorry to address it further, Commissioner, because it's just wasting our time and our energy. The mean-spear-ness that goes on and this divisiveness is just crazy. But again, I'm sorry, and that's, I do apologize. Sorry.
Would anyone else like to make a public comment at this time? I would. I too was the recipient of probably all of the emails that Rob got over the weekend. Most of them were addressed directly to the governor and myself. I am being accused of having a cush job awaiting me in Pierre to work directly for the governor. I would like to make it very clear to the public, that is not the case. I have met the governor on one occasion. It was the day after the March flood event of last year, when she flew into our community to speak to us about a flood event. When she was done speaking, Commissioner Clemish asked me to have my picture taken with the governor. I said hello to her, we took our picture, and we parted ways. I have never spoken to the governor since that point. I have never spoken to her staff directly. I do not have a job waiting for me in Pierre. If I did, I'm certain that I would not be married shortly, because my husband has no interest in moving to Pierre. I did want to make that statement. I have also been asked by Mr. Swenson to step down from my liaisonship with the Highway Department, of which I share with Commissioner Kettering. So at this point, since Gary has asked to be highway liaison, I am asking the other three commissioners if you would like to reconsider my appointment as highway liaison and to instead nominate Gary. I would be happy to put it on the February 4th agenda to reconsider. If the three of you feel that we do not need to do that, we can move forward.
Move forward.
Move forward.
Move forward.
So that is put to bed, and I was going to address the executive sessions that Rob has already addressed, so I won't say any further on that. So at this time, public comment is closed. Moving on to item five, which is approval of minutes for January 7th and January 16th. We will discuss January 7th first.
Move approval of the January 7, 2020 minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the January 7, 2020 commission meeting minutes. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. January 7th minutes are approved. I would entertain a motion to approve January 16th, 2020 minutes.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the January 16th, 2020 commission minutes. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Minutes are approved for January 16th. Item number six. First item is claims. There were, please note, there were some updates from when they were originally posted to the packet.
On page 26 of the claims, there's two items to truck trailer. The one is like $20,000, it's more than that, for supplies, and then there's another one right below it. Can you find that on page 26?
Still getting there, Gary, just a sec.
I'm just wondering, you know, it just says supplies, it's a kind of a generic word there. Twenty-some thousand dollars is a lot of supplies to be just lumped into one word.
They show 7,000.
There's 20,000 to truck trailer, and there's another one right below it. Can somebody tell me what that is?
Show line item of 7126 and 1845.
Yeah. Yeah, what is, I'm up, what do you buy for supplies that's $20,000?
There's not, I show there's $7,000 on one line item and 1,800 on the other line item.
That's what I show.
It's 20,000 to truck trailer.
Doesn't say that here.
It said it on mine.
Highway construction total at the bottom's 26,000, but that encompasses all?
Mine's.
There's also another one on page 31 to, and there's a large amount on that, it's called Farm Co. or?
Farm, that's for the 24/7 program.
Yeah, okay, and that's what that is?
I believe those funds come out of the E9.
These things just starting to explain very well, when you just lump it in there to supplies or, you know.
Yeah, that goes to the 24/7 program. I think it's the two, ventilizer tubes and things.
Maybe in the future, they can itemize it a little better?
I think that's reported in the report from.
Well, if you think so, well, then let's see it.
Oh, we'll get to it.
Further discussion on the claims? I would entertain a motion to approve the claims as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the claims as submitted. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Claims are approved. Next item, auditor treasurer report and pooled cash report.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the auditor treasurer report and the pooled cash report. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Reports are approved. Next item, mental illness hearings quarterly reports.
Move approval of the mental illness quarterly report.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the mental illness hearing quarterly reports. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Mental illness hearing quarterly reports are approved. Next item, Good Friday and Native American/Columbus Day.
Do we want to add this to our calendar, or what, how do you, how do you want to do this, Karen?
In the handbook.
In the, well, when, and I'm, I'm fine with this, but when we're doing the handbook, is it, is it the intent to add these days into the handbook?
Yes.
So we don't have to do that? So we have to have a motion now to have Good Friday, Native American/Columbus Day off? Okay. I'd go ahead and make.
Just hold on, hold on a second. I think we don't have to have this decision until Good Friday, which is April timeframe. At the next meeting on February 4th, we will have a report from our alternative HRD. He had something come up this, for this meeting and couldn't make it. He is going through the manual at this point, and I guess I, I think it may be his best if we just approve the manual with the updates instead of approving them twice.
Well, I mean, I don't know if it would really matter if we have people who, Karen, from what I understand, from many years past, we've always gotten Good Friday, Native American, Columbus Day off. Is that correct?
No.
Or is that something new? Okay.
We would get Good Friday either the whole day or half a day, but we would never get Columbus Day. We took that for the day after Thanksgiving.
Okay. I'm fine with waiting.
And the other, the other part of the discussion is trying to align more with what the state does, so we're all consistent, so if we're going to entertain that discussion now, I'm good with it, but I, I would prefer to have it when we review the handbook.
I agree.
Move, we tabled the discussion until, what, the next, is it the February 4th meeting? You wanted it? Move that we tabled the discussion for days off till the February 4th meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move the Good Friday/Native American/Columbus Day discussion to the February 4th meeting. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. We will discuss that next time. County surplus physio control life pack 1,000.
I'm not sure what that is.
From what I understand, they're like the heart shockers, are they not?
Yeah.
They're the defibrillators?
Yeah.
And from what I understand, speaking with the sheriff, has he got a grant to replace them? Talking to the MEED Cultural Center, they actually need some of these, so I think this is a good use of them, and they were very thankful that we were considering donating these surplus items to the MEED Center.
Is there more than one?
I believe we're talking about two. Yeah.
I don't know whether the Boys and Girls Club would be appropriate in place. They were looking for the, yeah, I think they were looking for that, and they, they were required by there to get one, and so I guess we also check with them.
Maybe we could reach a compromise, give one to the MEED and one to the Boys and Girls Club or something, along those lines.
I can check and see if they still want one.
Sure.
I think they got, got one, but I don't know if they have one for both of their locations.
Okay. I did, since I'm the liaison for the museum, they did express thank you that we were thinking about them, and it's, I really think, a good use of surplus property, that it can go somewhere, and it's really saving the MEED Center a lot of dollars, because these are pretty expensive, so.
Further discussion? Do I have a motion?
So I would move that we surplus these physio control life pack 1,000s. Do we want to designate where they go to? I guess we could just surplus them at this point, and then they can go where they need to go.
I'd just surplus them, and then we can.
Yeah.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to surplus the two physio control life packs. Further discussion?
Does anybody know how much the value is on these? By chance, if we would turn them in? I can't imagine there, from what I understand, there's not a lot of value to them, because no, no company is gonna put, you're not gonna put them in an ambulance or put them in a hospital, because they're so old, that I think the value is pretty limited, but I don't know the exact number on that. Does anybody else know? All right.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We will surplus the two units. Final item under number six is the 2020 wage scale and resolution. Would you like a separate motion on each of these or together?
If they can be together.
No, I was gonna wait till we did that study.
Okay.
Move approval of the wage scale and resolution.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second to approve the wage scale and resolution for 2020. Further discussion?
Yes, further discussion, I know we had talked about this before, but I think our deputy zoning administrator, we really need to look at that position, and I, it's, in my personal opinion, underpaid for the amount of work and expertise that's required in that position, so I think in the very short future, we need to look carefully at that position. That's all I have. Madam Chairman?
I would have to concur with Dan. She does a lot of work, but after she's been trained, and we can't afford to lose her now, and have to train somebody else again.
Yep, I would agree, and I talked with Karen about, in the, in the future here, we'll come up with a, probably a wage scale for that, specifically for that position, so.
Motion and a second to approve the wage scale and resolution. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Wage scale and resolution are approved. Moving on to item seven, Mission Hill Township bid. Please come forth.
Randy Fring from Mission Hill Township North. I guess we're wondering, asking the county if they would so consider putting bids in when we do our annual stuff for the year for road grading, snow removal, gravel, ditch mowing.
When do you publish your bids?
In March, we'll start the process.
Do you have a hard time getting people to bid?
Yes, and no. I mean, we've had, basically, one is the only one that ever turns it in, and we're just looking for more backups, I guess, you know.
Can I ask who that one person is?
No.
How many, how many years has it been since, because the county used to bid out exactly?
We were talking that coming in tonight. It started changing when Sorensen was in charge.
So it's been a while.
However long that's been, I don't know.
It's been a while.
I guess when Sorensen was here, he done it, they paid for the road drater, they paid for the man operating it, and then there was a service fee that was added on to this above all that, that was never, ever explained what the service fee was, it was always just added on to. And things kept getting more and less, and then it just faded out, and so, so.
So you would like the county to bid when you put it out?
If you, yeah, I mean, we, when it comes time, we would submit to you guys what we're looking for, if you want to bid and do the work for us, you know, more income, that type of thing.
Yeah, it's not a bad thing.
Yeah. We talked, talked about it last year, and Mike was just coming on and wasn't 100% sure what he was getting into at the time, and, and so I think it's something we can consider.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good idea to at least submit a bid if we can even do a portion of this, I think, help out our townships, if we're in a position to do it. I wouldn't see why we couldn't do it.
So when it gets, when we get to closer to our time, I guess we'll get ahold of, you know, if you're willing to do it, we'll give you the information, you know, or if you want to see specs or whatever.
And do you want this, like, how do you want to do it? Is it a bid annually or by the hour, or how do you, how do you want?
Well, hourly rate.
An hourly rate, I think, might be best for us at the county, because we have our stuff that right now we're required to do, and I, it may require us to move some of that stuff around, but I don't, so we can at least submit something.
Everything now is hourly, the only other thing is, the gravel is by the ton.
Okay.
And that's applied too, you know, the gravel is with the trucking to haul it and put it on the road.
And would you be interested in doing, and I don't know if you can, but would you be interested in doing it for more than one year?
We'd have to talk about it.
I guess my thought is, if we gear up people and equipment to do more townships, at the end of one year, we lose them all, and, you know, I don't blame you if you aren't getting your work done. We aren't getting our work done, just stop using this, but.
No. We're, we're getting it done, but, you know, the guy's getting older and might retire, and then what have we got? So we gotta start thinking ahead of the game and.
Sure.
Get more options out there, so.
Sure.
We will talk with Mike.
All right. Thank you.
Any, any other questions?
No, just, you're gonna submit us kind of, you know, the miles of road that you want us to do, and, you know, so we, the information that we need to do to accurately bid this, you know, the miles of gravel that needs to be done and graded and all that stuff, and then we could put something together on an hourly bid? That's what you're looking for?
Yeah. And it was always two different bids, one bid for grading the roads, and then one bid for snow removal.
Okay.
They separated them.
Are those the two priorities that you would be looking for?
Yeah.
Or what, I mean, is there anything in particular that you really are looking for?
Grading is, you know, that's where, if this person quits, that's where we're in big trouble.
Sure.
You know. Stuff, so. More options and help the county out, help us and whatever, so. Yeah, we can, we haven't done it that way, because the guy's, you know, knew the roads, but yeah, we can look with how many miles there are, and there are a couple spots in our township that require more grading than the other ones, just for the traffic flow that's on them.
Okay.
That, you know, we can specify that.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Randy.
Nurse Quarterly Reports, item number eight.
What's your name?
Happy New Year. I submitted our quarterly report, that's October through December, and also on that, I always do twice a year, January and July, the biannual stat analysis, so that's July through December, and I added a news article to the end of the report, I don't know if you can see that, I think there was a spare page in between, that talks a little bit about WIC and the benefits to infants. I think, I believe that was a federal study, so. Questions on the reports?
Have you seen a big increase in flu or cases or anything?
Actually, I have not seen it in my office yet. I've been very fortunate, it's widespread, keep hearing about horrible the areas. Unusual year two, prevalent strain is influenza B, which we usually see more in the spring. Not sure on vaccine efficacy yet, but it's too early to tell. I'm hoping, since I'm not seeing it, that that's a good sign, that people are immunized.
Wash your hands, right?
That's right.
Yep, exactly.
There's been, the last I grew three flu deaths in the state.
Wow.
So compared to other states, we're doing pretty well.
Under the point of dispensing line item, there was a note that you were notified that a contract was ended? Is that something?
I don't have the details on that.
Okay.
I've been limbo until I get the details. I was informed by the Office of Public Health Preparedness and Response, who handles that, for the state, that the state's attorney contacted and by letter, and terminated the contract, which was signed in August by the emergency manager.
Okay. Do you know anything about that?
I do, I wrote a letter, maybe someone else to address. I'm not sure, I'm not sure about the advice and culture, so like I said, it, I have to explain.
Okay.
So.
Okay, is that something we need to follow up on and either fix what was not correct, or?
Sure, that might be, maybe just.
Any other questions for Julie?
I'd move approval of the nurse quarterly report.
I'd move approval of the nurse quarterly report.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the nurse quarterly report as submitted. Further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item, oh, I guess that's not, ambulance quarterly reports. It's under item eight.
I'm doing the show hotel. You're doing the show hotel.
This, that, the new machine? Are you gonna use it on the state's attorney?
Actually, everybody drew straws. You got the short straw. No, we purchased, just got four of these new light packs, upgraded our light packs. And you asked for me to come and do just a quick little demo or explanation of what they are. So these are what's called a light pack fifteen. The features are, I'm just gonna start at one end and kind of move to the other. It actually operates as a automatic external defibrillator to begin with. It also will allow the paramedics to do manual defibrillation, which then they can more specifically adjust the, what they call joules of the energy to the specific patient. Adults are a certain set of numbers and pediatrics are a certain set of numbers and we can adjust, adjust to that. Then we're able to just do standard EKGs, just like you do in the hospital or in the emergency room, where they just kind of hook you up and see what your heart rhythm is doing. If a patient has certain types of symptoms such as, well, chest pain, shortness of breath, general fatigue, that type of complaints, then we can do what is called a twelve E D K G. And a twelve E D K G is where you hook all those, all those wires up to you, they kind of start right here and they kind of roll down around your chest. Most people that have had a, oh, I'm taking my picture. Most people that have had a, had any kind of physical knows what that, what that is. So, and then with that, with that image, that it's a picture that they, that we take of the heart and of the electrical picture, then we can send that via modem, Verizon modem, which is right here, a 4G modem. And we can send those images directly to the emergency room. Okay, so the ER doctor can actually see them and if it's questionable, they don't do it very much here, but they can actually then send that off to the heart hospital if they, either one, if they, if they wish to do so. Okay, so then, so we have that capability. Then it also has capabilities of just monitoring your blood pressure, your pulse, your carbon monox, your carbon or your CO in your, in your blood. You know, we put that thing on your finger. We have it here. It's just a little, just this little probe that attaches to the machine and attaches to your, to your finger. And it will read what your, what your oxygen saturation is. It will also, by us flipping a switch in here, will also show if there's any carbon monoxide in your system. So works really well for those general, I don't feel very well, no nausea, a little headache and especially in the wintertime, then they find carbon monoxide that's in the, in the bloodstream. But we've actually found that. So we've actually kind of side note, we carry little carbon monoxide detectors on our jump bag, on the, on that blue bag that you see in our ambulance, there's a carbon monoxide detector on that. And so when we go into a residence, if there's carbon monoxide in the residence, that thing starts making an awful beeping noise. And it kind of alerts the crew and that has saved the crew a couple times in, in alerting them that any other first responders that there is carbon monoxide in the building. So then this is also, you can set this machine to take your vitals every five minutes, every 10 minutes, every 15 minutes, which is quite handy, so you don't have to actually do it all the time when you're going to Sioux Falls or going on a transfer or a long distance transport of some kind. It also, we're also able to provide what's called a carbon CO2 detection to see if patients are retaining carbon dioxide in their lungs. It's a respiratory thing, respiratory element. And by looking at that and seeing that, the paramedics can adjust the respiratory treatment. Whether they need to get a little more aggressive or get a little less aggressive or, you know, that type of thing. So they can actually dial, dial in that, that treatment. Let's see, what else? This thing also attracts, keeps on track of everything that you've done for this patient, timestamped it. When you're working a call, you can actually plug in and put in procedures and timestamp medications right to the, right to the, what they call the code summary. Then we can upload the code summary to a cloud and then through this 4G modem that we have here. And then we can download all that information right to our patient care report. Saves tons of time from, you can imagine every 10 minutes of blood pressure going off on the way to Sioux Falls, that's a lot of data input. So this just puts it right in there. Let's see.
And you guys have, how long have we had these? Now, right here, sorry.
There you are.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
How long have we had these now? It's been a couple months of, as in?
Actually, back then it was right away in Jan-
Right away in January?
We had, these are version fours.
These are versions?
We had the same version of version one. They were 10 years old. So this is, there's nothing really different with this, other than the soft and the hardware, hardware software that's inside.
Got it.
And what's kind of unique is in December, 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 we got a service equipment warning from the manufacturer that said that the defibrillation button wasn't working 100% of the time on the version ones. So we're kind of did a good job at moving now because those version ones are starting to have a little bit of a problem. And the last thing you want to be is whether you want to be the patient when the deal.
Just hit it a few times.
So, yes, sir.
Turn it so I can get a picture of it.
I ought to comb my hair better if I wanted to give a picture.
I didn't take your picture. I won't take your picture either, Rob.
All right. Any, any questions? It's kind of a down and dirty kind of thing, all right? So, we'll just move on to this. All right. Dan, is this thing on? Most time I don't need to use it because it talks ding, la, loud anyhow, so.
Let's start with the ambulance quarterly reports.
Okay, will do. Well, the, the, the monthly billing and response report is there in front of you. It's this big chart looking thing that Jared helped me build. We are setting almost, well, just under $300,000 in uncollectible reimbursement, or I shouldn't say uncollect, but non-collected reimbursement, which is about, which is $13 and $13.09 per resident. One of the things I did this year, just to kind of, with my, just wanted to look at it a little bit differently, is in my end of year report, I put in there what our total monthly, what our totally annual expenses were. We're at, you know, 1.73 was our monthly. What we collected was at 7,000 or 776,084. We adjusted coroner transports and jail transports, Yankee County Jail transports off our books, you know, because of just the way we do it. That came to 11,000. Then I returned 84, $85,000 in budget this year. So what I did is I took a look at that and if you add all that stuff and add it to what my collection rate was, it's actually 878,161, which is about a $200,000 deficit. And it's only, and it works out to $8.85 per resident. Just a different way of kind of looking at those numbers, I thought. That's all. And, and, so we did with calls, we were, we did one, 2,108 calls for the, for last year, which is 52 calls over what we did the year before, which is still, we've got, we broke another record. It's one of those records that we keep breaking. We're breaking lots of records all the time. And it's one, that's one we really don't want to, to break.
And that, that's what you see as a continuing trend, is that more and more and more calls?
And I have a, you know, I've got, one of the stats is that I looked at today, was we are at about a little over 40% increase in call volume over the last 10 years. So, and then, yes, so, and then just for community outreach stuff, we did 14 CPR classes. Did about 155 hours of EMS coverage, special events, the football games, those type of, of,
Yeah.
Those type of events, I guess. And then 12 hours of public relation events. And that's presentations, going out to organizations, talking, doing, you know, going to the school and handing out pencils and talking to them about EMS and that kind of thing. So it's been kind of a busy year as always, so, which is unfortunate, as I said. So anyhow, that's kind of, and then you have the, the last three months of our adjustments attached to this, along with the last three months of our credit, or of our credit report. So, oh, and then there are some individual adjustments as well from insurance companies and deceased individuals. For that, that one's two, what was it? It wasn't much, 2,000, 2,300? Yeah, 2378.10 cents. Any questions about the report?
Would entertain a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the ambulance report. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, lastly, I received a request to do a EMS standby for the Special Olympics basketball tournament next month in February. And they have submitted a email requesting that the ambulance fee be waived. So I'm just bringing that to you for them.
Are, are they requesting an entire ambulance on standby or just?
No, just E T.
Okay. What, what is the cost for an E T?
It's, it's an eight hour event. It's $50 an hour is what we charge. It's $400.
Move approval that we supply an E T for the Special Olympics in February.
I'll second that.
I think, I'm going to supply an E T. The question is whether they are going to pay for it.
Right, yeah.
So your intent was to waive it?
Yeah, yeah, I'll reword that, I guess. I'd move that we waive fees for the E T service provided in February.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to waive the fees for a one day event for Special Olympics for an E T. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Anything else?
No. Do you have any questions for me?
I do. The sheriff just, we just surplus two light packs.
Yes.
Were those the same, same version that, that we traded off for those?
No.
Okay.
No, those light packs are true, just AEDs.
Okay.
Okay, and so they're automatic external defibrillators. And so, yeah, I think that's great that we repurpose those out there in the community.
Are they the ones that the Boys and Girls Club asked, asked that we could get?
They are some, yes, yeah. The Boys and Girls Club is working, so I'm working with another place to see if I can get them.
So how many do you have like this?
We have four of those, one for each ambulance. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, number 10, Register of Deeds Quarterly Report. Welcome.
Hello, Commissioners. 2020's treating you well so far. Hope it's a little bit of a quieter year for all of us.
Abatable.
My fourth quarter report was another strong quarter for us in terms of, you know, staying busy and collecting revenue and doing all the different things we do. Total transactions for the three months, 1,479, 270 birth certificates, 276 death certificates, 34 marriage licenses. Those come down as the weather gets colder. Marriage certificates, 82. Deeds, 240. Mortgages, 224. Mortgage satisfactions, 214. Land transfers, 254. County liens, 323. And state federal mechanics liens, that's a small number, so I combined those three, 36 total for the three months. We had $13,825 in copies revenue, averages about 4,600 a month. We had $26,219 in transfer fees, which represents 26.2 million in real estate sold for the quarter, which is another good quarter. The total fees collected for the quarter was 76,554 for an average per month of 25,518. I hope to give you my annual report tonight too. And I have almost all those numbers ready to go, but the state's holding me up on a couple that I like to include. So I ask to be on the February 4th agenda to give you that. But it's another strong record breaking year for us. Any questions?
Comment. My wife came in to your office last week or so to get some information and she was extremely impressed on how the staff got the information and helped her through the process.
All right, thank you, Don. We really, I'm really proud of my staff. They do a good job of taking care of customers. You know, I, I report these transactions. So a transaction is when we actually collect money for a service, you know. But we do a lot of things like what Don just described that don't show up in that, take a lot of time. We might have a day where we only have a dozen transactions, but we've been busy all day because we're helping folks on the phone or when they come in, want to do some research. We try to stay busy and I appreciate that, Don. I really have a great staff. They have a lot of, they have a lot of years of experience and it shows.
One, one question that I had, and I think it's to all department heads. Nobody ever signs all this stuff. Do we have signed copies when they're put away?
As far as the quarterly reports?
Yeah, all the monthly reports and quarterly, but it's not just you. It's all department heads.
I do sign some that I give to Karen as far as the fees collected and things like that. I've been doing that all along. And that's something she's, I think you keep those? So that's kind of as far as the fees we collect. It doesn't document all the different things we do.
Brian?
Yes, sir.
You know that I'm a big proponent of veterans. We've got veterans in our family. But there's a lot of people that always ask me, how do I find my grandfather's military record? And I said, well, you need to go see Brian because he'll find the DD 214. And then they always say, well, will it cost and how much does it cost, Brian?
There's no, no charge ever for that.
Yeah.
There's a charge sometimes, and sometimes we can get this waived also. But sometimes if they want a death record or a birth certificate along with the DD 214, sometimes we have to charge the standard fee of $15, but a lot of times we can even get that waived. We have a form we fill out if they're willing to do it. But Mike McDonald, you know, next door to me is a great help with these too. He comes over and does some of that research on his own.
You've gotten quite a few of my family members on both sides and I really appreciate it. Because it, we've learned things that we never knew.
Yeah. We're kind of at the mercy of what, if people brought it to us or not, as far as the discharges. You know, they're told, you know, when they get discharged, to bring a copy to your local county Register of Deeds office. And a lot of them do, but every once in a while they don't. And then we have, we have to start using Mike McDonald to try to find something that replaces it.
Yeah. Well, thank you for doing that, for all the veterans.
Any more questions?
I'd move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Register of Deeds Quarterly Report. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all. Be back in two weeks with some good news. All right, thank you all, be back in two weeks with some good news.
Got you on.
Thanks, Brian.
All right, item eleven is the sheriff's quarterly report, and the sheriff emailed earlier today, he's kind of booked with a, uh, jury deliberations, so he won't be here tonight.
Bet he wishes he was.
Well, they, they came back with the verdict, I think, already.
So we can, uh, we can either review his report and approve, or we can delay till next time if you have pertinent questions.
Can I suggest that we delay? There's a lot of, a lot of things in his report, he generates a lot of money for us.
I'd also like to get an update on how the jail is going, I believe it's about completed, and he, so I would, I guess I would move that we move the sheriff's quarterly report to the next meeting.
I have a motion and a second to place the sheriff's quarterly report on the February fourth agenda. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We'll defer that to February fourth. Item twelve, Veterans Service. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Mike.
Uh, just kind of a quick rundown, uh, contacts that we had through fiscal, or through fiscal year two thousand nineteen, we're twenty-nine contacts above what we had in two thousand eighteen, and two thousand eighteen was kind of our stand-up year, because that year we were, had over two hundred and one contacts more from the year before that, so eighteen and nineteen have run pretty close to each other. Um, one thing I would notice on, on the report is that, um, disability compensation, um, contacts increased by about two hundred this year, and I believe part of that is due to our, uh, Blue Water Navy, uh, pursuit from local veterans, and I think that's, that's bumped that up. Those, uh, those claims have just started being worked at the beginning of this year, January first of two thousand twenty, uh, and they are working on the oldest claims first, the, the oldest of the Vietnam-era veterans, and they're, they're segmenting these, and so it's, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna be a goofy situation in that, uh, some claims will come out before others, and, um, it's mostly due to concerns of mortality of those veterans, and that's, that's what the VA, that's not good. Our rides for the DAV van, um, we had less than we did from the year before, but that's mostly because right around, uh, March, we decided that we were only gonna take three, uh, riders in that van. The, the jump seat in the back of, of the van, uh, I'm pretty spry, and I have a heck of time getting back into that, that jump seat, so I'm not gonna make, make my elderly veterans try to do that. So we're gonna, we're, we're limited to three seats and a driver when we go up there, and the public has been very understanding of that, and, uh, and I commend them for not tearing my hair off, you know, because it is, it's troublesome when you can't get your loved one up there for a important client, and so I remind, remind them to let me know right away when you get one, if it's on a Tuesday and Thursday, we'll, we'll help you out, first come, first served. Um, are there any questions?
Yeah, I have one, Mike. What, what goes into burial benefits?
Okay.
And then the second part of that is, what happened in October?
In October? We had, we had a lot of people that passed away.
Is that it?
And, um, burial benefits go into people that have questions about whether they can get a flag for their, for their loved one, uh, whether they can get a, a bronze memorial plaque to mark their, their gravestone. Uh, if they do get a bronze memorial plaque, uh, there's a, there's a headstone setting fee that, that they, they ask about, because the state gives a hundred dollars towards that.
It's not.
Presidential memorial certificates is another issue, because it's a, it's a, it's a memento that, that, it's a signed, it's a signed certificate on a very nice piece of stationery, uh, that's, that thanks, that thanks the veteran for his service, but the country expresses their regrets in his passing. Um, there are a lot of little things that, that, that go down in that burial benefits deal, uh, requests for color guards from, uh, like specifically Navy, Navy guys or Air Force guys, all that kind of stuff gets, gets lumped into that category, and, and it was.
Long and short of it is forty people didn't die in October.
No, 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 no. No, it's, it's requests about different things. The other thing, too, about burial benefits, burial benefits can be, can be passed, be passed on over a two-year period. Okay, and where you had some guys that, uh, that were cremated, and then all of a sudden, uh, their spouse decides that, yeah, we wanna, we wanna, uh, crem him into, into the ground or into a, a crematorium or whatever, and they're, they're trying to, they're trying to patch things up. Now, not forty guys passed away in, in October. Uh, it just, a lot of requests happened at that time. And the other thing, too, that, uh, with the burial benefits, I included the fact that the state, uh, with some of the requests about the state funeral home, or not funeral home, let's, when you say cemetery, I kind of lumped it in there with that, too, because it depended, because they were asking, like, can they get, can they get the, uh, the, uh, there's a, there's a marble slab with, with all the VA stuff on it, and they were combining federal and state, uh, benefits at the same time, and, uh, it's just, just the way it shaped out that month.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Mike, would you elaborate on the Blue Water Navy and tell people how long we've been fighting for that?
Uh, Navy, Navy personnel that were considered Blue Water have been, uh, been shooting for this ever since, uh, there've been, uh, claims that allowed Agent Orange exposure, and, uh, it's taken about forty years to get it, to get it settled. Um, this, this past July, um, the Congress went along, uh, with those, uh, those sailors that, that served within eleven to twelve, well, eleven nautical miles, it's about twelve point, like five real miles away, and, and that is all based around the, the fact that, that, uh, drift from, uh, the estuaries, from the, from the rivers in Vietnam drifted out that far out at sea, and, and their, uh, the contaminants, uh, that, that would be in, in the water, in those waters, would be the same waters that, that our Navy vessels, uh, desalinate for, for your freshwater usage, for, for cooking, for taking a shower, for cleaning your clothes, uh, for, for cleaning, uh, work areas and all that stuff. Unknowingly, we, we passed on, uh, the dioxins and, and chemical agents of Agent Orange and the other defoliants, um, through, you know, through efforts of, of, of serving the coastline of Vietnam, and it's finally come around so that they're saying, yep, Navy guys, if you are within that eleven-mile limit, you're, you're considered, uh, roots on the ground, just like, just like the guys that were in the Marine Corps, the, the Air Force and, and the Army. So, uh, it was, it was a well-timed crew, well, wasn't well-timed, but it was, it was a welcomed correction.
Better late than never.
Yeah, no lie.
And I just want to add one more thing, and this was something else, I sent Rob a lot of things, I sent about the Sage Brothers also, from Niobur, Nebraska, they all went down on their ship, they were all killed the same night with their seventy-four crewmates when a Australian aircraft carrier cut their cruiser, uh, the evans in half. The seventy-four went to the bottom of the ocean, the three Sage Brothers all died, Niobur, Nebraska, I, I can't imagine one mother, a mother losing one son, and she lost three. The, the ironic thing is that all seventy-four plus the three Sage Brothers are not, and I repeat, not on the Vietnam Wall in DC, and they've been trying to get their names put on there with the other total seventy-four crewmates.
Yeah, that's a bad deal, and, uh.
Just because they were.
Hopefully, hopefully something happens.
Just because they were outside of the area a little bit.
It's just like recently, uh, the Navy has decided to name an aircraft carrier, um, and I'm trying to think of that guy's name.
Miller.
Dory Miller.
Miller.
Yeah, Dory Miller, thank you. Uh, Dory Miller was a cook. He could not be, uh, anything but a cook or a steward back in the Navy in nineteen, nineteen forty-one, and, and when his ship got hit, uh, and he, he lost his CO, he was with the CO when, when the, when the ship was initially hit, this cook, who wasn't supposed to be anything as far as a fighting man, manned an anti-aircraft, uh, turret, and it distinguished himself in his combat, and he was probably, seeing that Martin Luther King Day was yesterday, I think Dory Miller probably had a lot to do with the, the military realizing that, uh, yeah, all our soldiers have, uh, the backbone, and the craziness to get in there and do what you need to get done when the going's tough, and, uh, yeah, that's another thing that we should remark on in January, so.
Thank you. Any, any more questions before we move to approve?
Make a motion, we approve the Veterans Service Officer Quarterly Report.
I have a motion and a second to approve the report. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item thirteen, Welfare Quarterly Report.
I have a contact center on there for you also, I haven't really done that before.
Any questions for Jennifer on her report?
I'd move approval of the quarterly report. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the welfare report. Further discussion or questions?
Yeah, just point out, there was one thousand four hundred and fifty individuals who got food from the contact center. That's, wow, that's an impressive number, that, you know, that many people throughout our, the, our community need help, and, and they're getting a, a hand up and not a hand out to, you know, get them through the holiday season or whatever, I mean, that's, that's a huge number, um, and I think this just goes to show how many people are in need in our community, and, and the contact center is there to help, I mean, that's one thousand four hundred and fifty individuals, that's, that's a lot of people, that's a lot of households, and that's a lot of kids that might not have gotten a meal that night if, if it wasn't for you, so I'd just like to say thank you.
Jennifer, is that separate, different individuals, or is that people that came in?
That is, that's individuals.
Individual, wow.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, you're right.
That's, that's, that's a big chunk of our population, of, of our, you know, our area, is that many people, it's a huge number.
Ten percent, better than ten percent, almost, anyway.
We're lucky to be able to feed them. We'll be lucky to be able to feed them.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Item fourteen, Amend Load Limits Resolution. Mike will not be here tonight, he had a prior commitment.
Do we wanna?
So it is up to the, uh, the commission to discuss.
Sherry and I met with the manager of the Leesterville Co-op and discussed a, uh, possible resolution for helping him, uh, deliver and receive fertilizer, uh, in the time of, of load limits, and, uh, as I recall, he indicated, he would be, be very pleased if, uh, they could use a three-mile strip of road going north of Leesterville, and, uh, and then, uh, ultimately someday would, would maybe, uh, up the priority of getting that upgraded. Along with that, uh, we talked, uh, with the, uh, fertilizer plant, East, and, and they've added a request, and I think every year, uh, to use whatever street that is.
East Side Drive.
East Side Drive that goes up there, uh, to, uh, deliver fertilizer, and, uh, in addition, uh, with those two, uh, there was the Mark Court issue that I don't think at this point in time is, they've, they've not done anything towards building their plant, but, uh, we felt, uh, total of seven or eight miles, uh, a road, and if they, uh, handle it, uh, as best they can, uh, we could agree that, uh, they should be allowed to go to the seven-ton limit.
That's not on this resolution, though?
Yes, it is. It is. Do you see the yellow?
Okay.
Right above the yellow, there's three seven-ton notations.
Okay.
So we'd remain six tons countywide, except for these stretches of road?
Yes. So the goal is to, is to focus on saving a majority of our roads, but these small grain elevators have a tough time, it's their core business is hauling grain, working with fertilizer, and if we can dedicate a route, then we don't have them going on other roads, it's a dedicated route, and we understand we may, um, receive some damage. Now, Mike has, uh, talked with Bon Home, they were considering six ton this year, and they stayed with seven. Clay County is six, I think, am I gonna get this right, Don, do you remember Hutchison is seven, and so is Turner?
And Clay's, we got a mix, as I recall.
Yeah, so we're kind of that county in the middle, um, and we felt this was maybe a good compromise for folks who that's their core business, um, and, and they do have a severe restriction when these load limits go on, and this year, knowing how wet it is out there, it could be a very long load limit season. Public comment on this, I see, uh, Leesterville representative and Gromark, would either of you like to comment on this, or at this time?
It would just be very appreciative if we could reach this compromise, just to help our businesses out through this type of thing. It really is a huge kindness.
Okay. Is there other pub, other public comment on this? Any concerns?
I would say that before, uh, I would say that Mike met with us, and Mike was fairly confident that this is a very doable, uh, resolution to the problem, and shouldn't cause, uh, uh, significant or much of any damage.
I think I'm okay with it limiting it to these, you know, specific routes and, and limited miles on there, and I don't remember, I looked, we went to six tons, what, four years ago, three years ago, maybe?
You know, it would have been, um, twenty eighteen, I think twenty eighteen was the first year that it was done. I think twenty eighteen was the first year that it was done, and it was a big surprise at the time.
Mm-hmm. And I remember at the time looking at the reasoning and the data that came down from LTAP essentially, and it made sense, but I do understand the impact to these businesses, especially getting fertilizer out. So I can, especially if Mike's on board with the-
Yes.
This four-fiftieth Avenue, highway fif- is that the Markort one you were talking about?
Yes, it is.
Okay, how long of a route is that? I mean, because the one by Leesterville is just a few miles, and then the other one is just a few miles.
It's one mile.
Just one mile?
One mile, yeah.
Yep. So East Side Drive, I'm guessing it's a mile and a half, and then the Leesterville would be three. So five and a half miles.
And I know, I know, I know Leesterville's been struggling for years with this, so I guess I'd move approval of the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution to adjust load limits on three sections of highway to seven ton. Further discussion?
I'd just like to say, I think this is a good compromise, you know, to help those affected businesses out, and I, it's not the six tons we want, but I'm glad that everyone was able to agree on seven tons, and hopefully it'll work out, so.
Since it's a resolution, I'll take roll call vote.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes. Motion passes. Next item, item fifteen, Mr. Vedder, a plat for Gladys Kubel?
Correct. This is plat of track one, Kubel addition in the northeast quarter of section nine, Township ninety-four north, range fifty-seven west. Basically, this is a forty-two-point-four-one acre plat that Planning Commission recommends approval on.
I believe, if I remember correctly, that we're going to sell this and divide it, and that's why we're plotting, because it's gonna be under the twenty-acre minimum requirement.
No. That was the other-
The other one, okay.
This is forty-two-point-
Forty, ah, my bad. That's the next one, okay.
Yeah, this one's pretty straightforward, other than the shade.
Is there a creek in there or something? My plat map doesn't show a creek.
I don't know what, why that is that way. It must be a terrain of some sort.
I would entertain a motion on the Gladys Kubel plat.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the plat. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Plat is approved for Gladys Kubel. Next item, plat for Thomas Luther.
I bet she doesn't have included, didn't she?
I have it on, I have it on here, if you can see it.
Lewis and Clark?
Yep.
Yeah.
Lot of lot twenty-six, Lewis and Clark Business Center, located in the south, six forty-five feet, except for lot H two of the north, out in the northeast, section sixteen, Township ninety-three north, range fifty-six west. This is basically one acre that was platted out, and it meets all the ordinance requirements, and Planning Commission recommends approval.
So this was right along fifty-two?
Correct.
Lakeside Commercial with the one acre minimum, meets all requirements. If I remember right, he was dedicating that road public, correct? Is that what spawned the, what spawned this plat? I'd move approval of the Thomas Luther plat.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Thomas Luther plat. Further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thomas Luther's plat is approved. Next item is a plating hardship.
Mr. Schrabs here to discuss a plating hardship that we're gonna put up on the screen.
Too dark? I don't know, I guess if you can see that, I can't really see it. I guess I've got it here on the monitor. If you have it on your tablos, I don't know. Basically, what we've done here is, I have a ten-acre field back here on this east corner of the lot there. I'm just trying to, if I can walk up there and show you-
Yep, go ahead.
There should be a pointer, too, if you want. Is that later?
Basically, this area right here.
Okay.
So what we have here is, I own the whole area there, but we, on that ten-acre field, you can see the fence line in there, fence lines in there, we built a house in there. Now, we're trying to get the financing to get this finished up. This ten acres is, I mean, it's a field all on its own, it's separate from everything, it's always been that way. But what I'd like to do is get a variance to just have that as ten acres, so that we can get this financing done, get this house finished up. My son's gonna buy the farm right up there, it's kind of out of there, he's got his things in mind, we're just trying to get everything else done, so we can close on this.
Mark, are you asking for a variance from us, or you just, what are you asking exactly?
Yeah, he's asking for a variance at this point.
This come in front of us in the Planning Commission?
No, it has not yet. This is just, he's just coming in for discussion. This, again, is the issue of, you know, banks requiring less than, less acreage than a lot of people wanna plow it out, but-
Yeah. It's kind of crazy how they, I mean, they just don't want acreage, and I don't understand, you would think that that would be better. I mean, that stuff, everybody wants that, but they don't like it. I mean, it's, they want it down as small as they can get.
So you're just basically coming to us before you apply for the variance and saying what, and I think, you know, this is something that we've discussed, or at least I and Commissioner Healy have at the Planning and Zoning Board, is the reality is, is things have changed, you know, the banks, and here's a letter from Core Trust Bank wanting smaller than, you know, twenty acres, which right now, Yankton County's at twenty acres, I believe Bon Home's at two and a half, Turner's, every county around us is way less. It's something that we need to address, because times have changed, just like you said, they don't want the twenty acres. They probably don't want ten, they want really as, at least as you can get, so-
Well, yeah, I mean, he's confident that we can get this done at ten, but with a twenty, they, they don't like it.
Yeah. Yeah, I know, my three years on the zoning and planning board, and Don was on there a long time, and so these were always approved, and as of lately, a few Planning Commission's opinions have changed on these, but I don't see a problem with this. I think this is, you know-
You plan to retain ownership?
Good development, and, yeah.
Yeah, this is gonna be nothing, but, I mean, I've, since the day I could get on a tractor and do any fieldwork, that's where I wanted to build a house. Now, fifty-some years later, it's finally here, but now we gotta try and figure out how to get the financing to get it done. And it's just, like I said, you know, when we try to get this going, it's just, it's been one friggin' road block after fifteen others, and now we're at this one, and we gotta try and get through it.
So Gary, what, do we want a motion on this, or just have them make us aware of it, or what do you, what do you want?
I think that's the biggest thing, is he just, you know, he just wanted an opinion, basically, that it's, that it looks like it's good as far as moving forward. Unfortunately, there's, there's an issue getting out there to get the survey done, and so it's gonna probably be a while before that can be accomplished, but-
Because we, I went with Brent, John Brent, line survey out to that area to, I guess I was never aware of all of the things that it takes for these guys to do a survey until I went up there with him. There hasn't been anything done out in that area. There's been, there's been sales, yes, but nobody has ever split anything off. So now, to do this, if we can get this variance, our next issue is, is with the Jim River flooded, they don't want anybody out there. The, what do you call it? Emergency services, they came and said they don't want anybody out on the river, anything to do with that. So if we can get a variance, if at a later date we can do a survey, what do they call it, an eloquent survey, I guess he, Brent says is legal, I don't, I mean, if we can just get something moving along, at a later date we would do the survey, but right now, you can't, you can't get anybody out there. You can't get this done. I mean, it's, and if we're not gonna get, next spring's not gonna be anything like last spring, and it's gonna be very slow. We're probably looking at a year before, I don't know. If you tell me what the weather's gonna do, then we'll-
Did you say you had the house built?
Yes.
It's built, and it's there.
It's built, it's there. Yep. Yep. So it's just, like I said, trying to move forward, that's with us, and it's just, it's been the same issue, weather's been an issue all year for us to do the same thing, and like I said, now we're trying to get the financing finished up on it, and trying to fix it.
I guess I don't see a problem with it. I know, Don, when you and I were on the Planning Commission, we approved, God, a hundred of these for small, and I can't recall one ever getting denied, and so I guess I don't see a problem with it. It's your property, I see no issue with it.
The intent of the ordinance is-
It's not going anywhere. I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to develop this to sell, I'm not, it's not, no.
Yeah, the intent of the ordinance isn't to keep people from building on their own land, it's to develop, to prevent development of the countryside, and it's-
And I think we need to look at our neighboring counties, and all our neighboring counties have realized that twenty acres doesn't work, and they've all since gone to a smaller number, and I think it's time Yankton looks at a smaller num- a smaller, now, whether that's two acres, or five acres, or what, and prevent people like you from even having to bother to come in here and just do it, and so-
Right. You know, that whole area is nothing but brown. The whole area is, I'm not, I'm not looking to sell. I would suggest that- It took me this long to finally get there, so I'm sure as heck not looking to sell.
Yep.
I would suggest to give him the variance, because if it's a house built, we can collect some more taxes, because we need them for Yankton County.
Yep.
So I'm in favor.
Any more comments? So are you good with direction? All right, thank you for coming.
All right, thank you.
Item eighteen, approve county mission statement.
Oh, we've been, been a few times already to discuss the mission statement, and, you know, Don had asked if we could consider changing some wording again to include the egg community. We, a few of us tossed some ideas around, and I guess, overall, the discussion needs to, it needs, we need to decide whether or not everybody's good with leaving it as is or trying to come up with some other, some other wording. So just to mention again, what was decided and added from the last meeting was, we changed, we added history to the vision statement, to where it says, "Yankton County will be a dynamic place with a strong sense of history, community pride, environmental responsibility, economic prosperity, and rural culture." And then the mission statement still stands as, "The mission of the Yankton County is to provide citizens with high-quality public services that create a foundation of trust, unity, safety, and collaboration." And the bullet points below that, we did, we did change where honesty, integrity, integrity, and transparency in all financial dealings, we scratched financial dealings and just put in all proceedings. So that's kind of where we're at right now. Unless somebody has some other suggestion for changing the wording, we can have that discussion.
Just for the public to know, has the county ever had a mission statement in the past?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not that I know of.
So it's just more of a symbolic?
Well, the idea of the mission statement and the vision statement is that it's supposed to drive your philosophy of management of the county, and it gives you an overall outlook for the public to come in and review what you think is important in your territory. And we should be living by it.
Yeah, when we make a decision or work on a project, you know, it should be, you know, follow our mission statement with what we do, and it's, like you said, it should be something that we live by, you know, everybody in the county, and particularly its leaders.
I'm real fine with what you've done. If a year from now there needs to be a change, we can make a change.
I like the addition of history into the vision statement, and that was, I gotta give credit to Brian Hunoff for that, because Yankton is, probably more so than any other county, we have a longer history, and I, you know, looking at the bridge and the buildings that we have, it is an important part of who we are and how we got to this point. So. And I like the honesty, integrity, and transparency in all proceedings. I think that should be something we try to live up to each and every day.
I would entertain a motion.
I would move adoption of the Yankton County Vision and Mission Statement.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the Yankton County Vision and Mission Statements as presented. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. We have a vision and mission statement. Thank you very much for-
We'll get that updated and sent to the legislature.
Madam Chairman, may I have a moment?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so we've adopted this, and we've all adopted this, and now is the hard part, is every day, us as leaders, we need to live up to this, and we need to lead by example, remain positive, and operate in an open and welcoming manner. So the easy part's done, the hard part is living up to this each and every day. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item nineteen, electronic building permit and E nine-one-one addressing assignment update.
Just wanted to let you know, I know you've been working hard at this for a while before I had even started, but we're actually live now with the electronic building permit and the E nine-one-one addressing assignment tool, so just wanted to let the public know that is up and running, and we'll continue to build on that in the years to come, and hope to start getting all these systems working together in one fashion, which will be nice, and it's just, it's just a good tool to allow people to be able to sit at their home, fill out a building permit, and then come make payments and things, so just wanted to let you know about that. We are doing, gonna, we're gonna do a video with a step-by-step process, and then I didn't know I was gonna ask-
done. The hard part is living up to this each and every day. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item 19, electronic building permit and E 911 addressing assignment update.
Just wanted to let you know, I know you've been working hard at this for a while before I had even started, but we're actually live now with the electronic building permit and the E 911 addressing assignment, uh, tool. So, so just wanted to let the public know that is up and running and, uh, we'll continue to build on that in the years to come and hope to start getting all these systems working together in one fashion, which will be nice. And, and it's just, uh, it's just a good tool to, to allow people to be able to sit at their home, fill out a building permit, and then come make payments and things. So just wanted to let you know about that. We are doing, gonna, we, uh, we're gonna do a video with a step-by-step process. And then I didn't know I was gonna ask also if you wanted to submit something, some kind of press release to the papers or, or how you wanted to deal with that. But, but it is up and running and, and we can go from there.
I would like to, um, when we, as soon as we get the instructional video, then I'd like to get a, a release out, just, just so we're prepared for, for people to use it. But if anyone wanted to use it now, they can go to the county website, go to the Beacon, um, link, correct?
Correct.
And, and you can find your parcel, um, through the Beacon website. And right at the top, it'll show, you can click on a link that says apply for a permit, then it'll step you through the process. So.
Do we have any sort of disclaimer or anything for that? If somebody, you know, would apply for something that, you know, they shouldn't get, and for some reason it would, you know, they would get it, something that they'd maybe need a conditional use permit or variance? Is there some type of disclaimer that?
Well, we would still have to review that, contact people if that was the case. So.
Sure. All righty.
Have you had any applicants or many?
No, it's been, it's been all done in the office so far. So.
Item 20, request to obtain, uh, GIS software.
Yeah. So basically, since I've started, I know that I've been using, uh, Beacon for a while. But there's a lot of things that, that I feel that the purchasing of the R GIS software for planning and zoning, uh, would be a better way to, to serve everybody and to give us the ability to, basically, then we'd have direct access to all the data layers, the ability to create data if we needed to. Um, we have the ability to, to have multiple layers of aerials, floodplain, without bogging the web, the Beacon website down. And, and it allows me to basically search section, township, and range without just scrolling along the Beacon site, trying to find certain parcels and things. Um, I can do queries, give me all the R1 parcels in the entire county, those kinda things. Uh, and one of the big ones we always struggle with on Beacon is whether or not it's a township road, a state road, a county road. Those kinda designations can be entered into the GIS. And so we can see, you know, who's responsible for signing plots for highway authority and things. Um, you know, we've talked about doing more of this with the laptop to where we can create graphics and display them at the meetings. So with this license, you do get, you do get the ability to have it on one desktop and one laptop. So that would be an advantage to us to also. Um, I'd have a better tie to the other county department data. We're always striving to have access to as much data as we can. And the cost is, as I handed out a quote to you, is $7,000 upfront. That includes the software upgrades and support. And then it's $1,500 annually for maintenance, just like equalization and emergency management pay. So.
Do we do Beacon with the city too? Do we share that, uh, cost with the city?
The flyovers, we do.
Yeah, just the airplane.
Just the airplane.
Yeah. Is there any, like, um, advantage of, like, a bundling? I know we already have this with, um, with, um, equalization and emergency management. It could be, you know, say if we got three packages or four, is it, is it cheaper to do that? Or is it cheaper to go individual?
I could check on a server type license. The problem is with that is when you're sharing on the server is getting access when you need it. And in planning and zoning, we would need access pretty much primarily every day, all day. And that might, and obviously equalization's building parcels, so they need access. And that'd be my only concern.
Okay.
I was just gonna say, equalization has, has this already. And so to be a.
Well, and there's, there's so many more things you can do with GIS as far as like doing maps for, like you said, the, the highway department or, or, you know, the data that we can collect is, it blows my mind. I know that. It's pretty impressive.
Would we discontinue then, uh, subscribing to Beacon?
No, we would, we would never, I don't think, do that just because the fact that that's what our citizens access for, for data on their parcels and things. So.
I believe right now Jeff uses this to update Beacon, essentially. So he does the legwork in this and then he'll send it to Beacon or Schneider and they incorporate updates into the Beacon website. So it's kinda separate, but they work hand in hand.
Down the line, if you ever wanted to get to the point where you wanted to host the website ourselves as a county, you could certainly do that and, and change the Beacon website at that time. Cause like Commissioner Healy said, basically, every layer that's on Beacon currently is provided from our GIS. So.
Do you know, Gary, the, the annual fee, is that included in the up, the original upfront? Or is that?
Yeah. No, you don't have to pay that the first. It's just the maintenance from the, from there on out. And that's on the downside of the sheet.
You wanna motion for approval for purchase?
I just told you, come in front of the commission for this, this amount for the budget. So that's what I'm doing.
Okay. I move approval of the request for the ESRI. Is that it?
Yes.
GSI?
Arc, some, Arc GIS soft.
Software package.
I'd second that.
I have a motion and a second, uh, to approve the quote from ESRI as presented by Gary Vedder. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Thanks a lot.
You're good to go.
Thanks, Gary.
When it gets up and running, uh, you have to show me, uh, show me what we can do on that. I'd appreciate you saying.
We can do a presentation on the screen down here.
That'd be good. Invite me down.
Well, maybe we'll do it at, when it's all running, you could, uh, give the public a little tour of what we're able to do with it now. I think it's a good thing.
Next item, 21, sound system.
Well, we got a call today to come down, so I'm gonna guess you have some questions. I'm not sure what the.
I put this on the agenda and I felt it was a good idea to have you guys here in case there were questions. I, we had the presentation and, you know, I just, uh, there's probably still some questions out there.
Absolutely.
Is it open for discussion?
Yep. Go ahead.
See, I, I like most of what you did, but I think per our discussion, why, I, I feel wireless microphones would be nice. I can't justify the expense of taxpayers' dollars. So I, I think we should scratch the wireless microphones off of here and go to the wired ones. Just, you know, it's pretty significant cost. It's a third, basically, the cost.
Yeah, I just, we totally understand. We just wanted to put it out there.
I know they have capability, but, uh,
Right, right.
I just, I don't know. I can't, personally, I can't justify the, the cost difference, uh, from 17,355. The wired ones are 6,530. So.
Could help you. We'd have fun putting it in though.
Yeah. No, I, I, you know, I think it would be great, but I, I just, uh.
I'll be honest, things I would really be looking at for you guys, knowing a little bit about your sound system, doing a little repairs here, uh, 2014. That room there is a mess. Um, blank. It's a, I can't say what it really is, but the wiring, we need to clean it up. I'd like to get that rolling rack out of there. You're rolling that all the time. You're taking that house cable and you're moving that all the time. After time, you're just wearing that cable. House cable is not meant to be moved. It's made to be mounted and it's set. You use jumper cables and stuff like that. Love to, we think we can get a wall mount rack in there. Get your equipment in there and keep that up off the floor. Now someone actually could have some room to walk in the room to the steps. It'd be a beautiful thing. The guys working on the IT equipment, it would be very nice that they could walk in and work. I mean, whoever designed, that's, someone should be hung for designing. To be honest with you. That was the worst design. I realize it was 20 some years ago or whatever it was, but, uh, as an IT guy, technical guy, I like nice open space where our rooms and they gave you a closet. Or, cause you got all your data equipment in there. I mean, your whole entity runs out of that room, I'll be honest with you. So.
We have had problems with things getting disconnected. None of the microphones working.
I'd be surprised if you didn't have those things. But you have one person that comes, he doesn't care about the other guy's equipment. So we put, we did stuff and then pretty soon you get stuff off.
You said the guy should be hung, probably one of those cheapest bid things.
Whatever it was, but, you know, it's just, it is, it's the sins we're gonna live with. So how can we do it? Chris and I got an idea of getting at least the audio equipment. We think we got the cables long enough. We'll get it. We would like to get it higher, but we won't because of the length of the cables. You're gonna come in there, it could be a little head bonker there. Um, but at least your equipment would be mounted. So that's the thing we're after.
Also in there, we have a problem of we, where are we supposed to leave that door cracked so it doesn't overheat? And it always gets closed. It, if you guys could address that too. I mean, uh,
Yeah.
I know we've put some vents in there and that itself does well, but.
Really, also to put you up there.
Yeah. So, uh, heat rises.
Sure.
Right now, you guys have vents up on the ceiling. Uh, the easiest fix for that is you kind of hole in the door, put a grate on the front of it, and then it'll naturally bring the heat up and out. Um, that's a quick, easy, simple solution. Uh, there are other systems out there that use a thermostat and a muffin fan. It gets above 70 degrees and it turns on until it drops below 60. Um, those are, uh, in the grand scheme of things, fairly cheap though. Three hundred bucks to get enough air moving in that closet to do that. So that's certainly something we could.
Add that in.
Add that in there to yours.
Just said, really, it'd be a little like an extra cost. And as far as kind of hole in the wall, you guys probably got, maybe you made this guy, cut a hole in the door. Now you guys get to throw a vent, slap a vent.
Okay.
You're out of your own right to get out. I'd rather, you guys got your own door.
All right. Sounds good.
I'll play with wire. I'm actually, I can make holes, but that's not pretty much.
So kind of bare minimum, are you looking at a, a mixer and a new rack and a, for the sound or what?
Yeah. So, uh, we're actually gonna reuse some of your old equipment. The amps back there are okay.
Okay.
Uh, we're gonna put in a couple of new speakers that will hang off the wall. And, um, we would add the new conferencing system that would tie directly into the old amps. We talked about doing the TV out in the hallway. I think that's a no-brainer. If you go look at it, you know it needs to be replaced.
Yeah.
The camera thing, we didn't know. You've talked about streaming. We don't know if you wanna go that way or not. Uh, if you wanna put one in, um, that's an option. It is a fairly costly option.
Do you realize that you can put some of it in now? We can rebid it at another date.
Yeah.
That's kinda why I broke out the bid like I did, so we can play kind of like a tick tock.
It's kind of an à la carte.
Yeah. So you don't have to be, I'm not gonna give you to 20 grand, 30 grand. You can say this year, we can budget 10 grand for this month. Maybe another six months a year from now, next budget year, you could put a few more into it if you wanna get the camera. Um, projector, I'd recommend projector. You saw it, just seen it.
Yeah.
We've got a hundred of those in our, where we worked in.
Do you recommend the laser or the lamp? The lamp one has the bulb that has to be replaced, but it is less expensive.
The nice thing about the laser and the lamp is if you're gonna be turning things on and off, the laser doesn't have a cool down period. It will shut down. You can turn it back on immediately. The lamp bulbs, when you get to higher lumen outputs, which this one will be a little bit higher, well, it'll be a lot higher than this one, um, you need a cool down period before you can turn it back on. So you might not be able to use it for a minute or two, up to five, depending on how hot it is. Um, those lasers produce a lot less heat and they last very long times. So, uh, it's, you know, a cost benefit. Do you, do you see a need where you're gonna turn it on and shut it off right away and then have to turn it back on? Or?
Is it gonna be on, leave it on? How many hours are you using it? Um, like us at the school, our teachers will sometimes, there's some teacher will turn it on in the morning and won't turn it off till the end. Others will turn it off and on. Don't know what kind of time frame. I can't say a bulb isn't a bad idea for you. If you're not running many hours, maybe a bulb, you'll get a lot of life out of a bulb.
How much, what's the cost of a bulb?
I didn't, I didn't read the.
Do you got an estimate of?
Two hundred bucks.
Yeah, two hundred bucks.
We could go through.
I'm guessing.
In your, in your.
Quite a few years.
Uh, about two to 3,000 hours.
Yeah, two, around $2,000.
But if the on and off on that cycle on the bulb, every time you turn it on and off, does take some time out of it. So it's just the nature of bulbs.
I mean, you could probably buy quite a few bulbs for that price. Don't get me wrong. But we just want to give you the.
Right.
What you're looking at. We like, we like options. So. The only other thing about that display, we mentioned the commercial display. I do wanna get a different bid on that. That's been 30 days. And since that's a display type model, sometimes electronics on that type of stuff has a turnaround cycle. I may not be able to get that exact model. I'll find something in that same price range for you and make sure I might just change the model number on it. So, like I said, I already put a model number in there, but, uh, I just gotta check on that one thing. If there's anything drastic on that.
Resconnect, yeah.
That's the one thing I'd probably be a little worried about as far as price changes. And that could price change to the good also, don't get me wrong. But, uh, with the lamp speakers, I doubt if that's gonna change any of the mixers and the setups.
If we were to do a new display, would it, not necessarily a screensaver, but having things moving on the screen help us or?
Um, so that, that goes into your burn-in. Um, so if you have that static menu there, you're going to see those lines. It's just how long it will be until that happens. Uh, so we'd stay away from IPS panel, uh, cause those are very subject to burn-in. Um, and we went with a commercial display. Those are actually designed to do this. Um, I'm sorry, we would go away from OLED, OLED, those are burn-in. Um, but, uh, we would, we, we got the commercial monitor that is set and designed to do the menu boards and things like that. Um, yes, it will, if you have moving, uh, content, that will help with that burn-in process. It will, it won't burn in as easily. Um, but that is just part of the, part of the display world. It does happen. Um, the, the newer commercial displays though, don't burn in as easily. Um, and actually out there, it's not so much the burn-in that you see. It's, it, the whole hue has changed, is blue. Um, and so, uh, we have our security cameras at, uh, our office. And there are definite grid line burn-ins where those grids are, but it doesn't affect the view in each one of the cells. So, but that's because it's static and they're always looking at it at that view.
Resolution on these?
Uh, they're all the 1080p or higher. Uh, we wouldn't give you anything less than that.
I think the input's honest. We made it, we were looking at making it easier for your staff to like upload stuff to it, um, making it easy on that part too.
Yeah. The nice thing about the LG commercial displays is they do have some functionality where you can tie it into your network. Uh, and you can put a software on it where you can just upload to it and it saves it inside the TV. You don't have to go out, put in a flash drive or anything like that. You still have that availability if you wanna do it that way or if someone likes doing it that way. But you can connect it to your LAN and then remotely manage it.
I got a question. Uh, Dan said that he didn't wanna go with the wireless mics. Now, say two years down the road, we decide that we want the wireless mics. Can we add it? Or would it be a huge cost?
It's totally two different systems. So you have to commit one way or the other. Otherwise, if you wanna go wireless, you're gonna buy a whole new system.
Okay.
Yeah. If, if you're just looking for a wireless mic for somebody to talk to, that's totally different subject. We're talking the conferencing mics or the, the board mics you guys have.
Thank you.
No, a wireless mic, that's easy. A handheld one.
Lapel mics or something like that, we could wire something into this system too. That's not a good one. Where we're looking at is on your side there. Um, the wireless had one D function that is where you guys are doing your calling and voting. You could all KDA on it in the pop-up and you could even, they even actually, I think they said it legally works as a record too.
Yeah, a legal record.
That was the only, that was the other thing the software part of it was.
Right.
We used that in, um, an office that I worked in five years ago and that was a handy way to vote.
Yeah. I mean, this. And I, you know, uh, we've kind of priced out the lower end models on the wired microphones. They do have a higher end model, if you were interested in that, that adds some functionality. They do have a higher-end model, if you were interested in that, that adds some functionality. Uh, where you could do that, but, um, we, we kind of gave you both extremes to feel, feel out what you guys were looking for.
And Shure has a good website. I mean, if you're curious in what you're looking for, go to the Shure website. That's, we like Shure. Shure's one of the top line audio. Um, not saying others are bad, I'm just saying Shure is, I don't care if you ever watch concerts, you ever watch, it's gonna be a Shure mic.
What are we gonna add?
To what? And there, it's. This be compatible with the new mix?
Mine keeps shutting off.
That's me, I can shut you off.
I, so you're, you're saying we, we can take any number of this, so if we wanted to go with the monitors and the sound system itself and then add cameras later, we could, we could do that? That'd probably almost be what I would, I guess, feel most comfortable with is, you know, we didn't budget for this, but we've had a lot of complaints that people can't hear and we've had a lot of problems with the system not working, so we, we know we gotta do something.
So if we, we take a display and then the speakers and the, the cheaper projector, no camera. The power rack package and then the wired, I added up to about fifteen. Does that sound?
Probably sound right, fifteen, no, yeah, probably.
And we talked about replacing this guy as well, getting a better mic.
I think we, we need to do that.
Yeah, that one's probably the worst.
Numbers are probably right, I'm not.
Somewhere in there?
Yep.
And the other thing is, we understand, you know, you guys are gonna be, it's not gonna be, I can put it in, that's the end of the project. Sixty days, ninety days, you need, we need to come in, make adjustments because that time frame, we're not gonna hold you to like two meetings within a thirty day period of your work and say, well, we're gonna, then you start getting here's a hundred dollar bill for this.
We're here to troubleshoot more locals.
So we'll, we'll definitely work with you, you know, even sixty days beyond.
That's not right.
And how big will it be with the labor costs? How long will the labor be at about thirty to sixty days, that's probably.
Fifty thousand.
Some of this should have been working in the first place.
This is just for six positions, but like I said, we have nine people on our zoning and planning board, so I think we need, did we move it to nine?
I think, I think I put on there six.
Okay.
You're right.
Okay.
You had a separate sheet.
Because we'd, we'd also like some microphones on that table over there. For the planning and some.
I'd have to find you the cost of the mic. We ask, yes, that system can add multiple.
Yeah, that system can go up to two hundred some microphones.
So, it's just the cost of the mic and those mics on the wired were much cheaper than the wireless. We can get, I can work you up something. It'll get you a definite, this is what we're looking at cost, because if you want to go that route, then you know exactly. You know, right now we're just kind of piecing things together, roughing it.
True.
I can, you can, tell me what you want to do today and how many mics you want.
What's your turnaround from the time we say yes or no to when it's completed?
I gotta talk to my supplier. Um, generally, maybe a week or two.
Yeah.
Get started. And then we gotta work, then I gotta work with your staff, work around that, we're gonna be used.
Sure.
We work full-time jobs, so it's gonna be after four or five and weekends, we're gonna come in. Because we gotta keep that going. That's gonna be the biggest project right there, getting the, if that's what you want to go with first and move that rack up. To me, the main thing is that wire just gotta get cleaned up. I don't care what you do, but otherwise, that wire just gotta get cleaned up.
That's the thing of nightmares for IT guys. We'll get you all cleaned up.
So is the commission okay with asking them to produce a hard quote? Do you have enough direction as to what we are requesting?
Mark off real quick, what are, what would you act a hard quote on? You want to do the commercial display?
Yes.
You want to do the wired conferencing system?
Yeah, what, nine.
Nine positions.
Nine positions, okay. And you want those, you want?
What's that?
I think that's a little overkill.
If we, well, we should have one for every planning commissioner. We have nine planning commissioners, so. And then when we do, uh, an equalization board, when we have the city and the school board, we have a lot of people in here. I guess, the time to do it would probably.
You just, you want to do six across this and then three on that table? Is that what you're thinking or?
Do, do we need one of the, for the newer system? Do you need one of these for each person or, or can people share?
You need to share it, I mean, you share it, I mean, you guys work however you want, you know.
I, I guess I'm, 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 I don't know how the new systems are.
As long as each person understands, you gotta, you gotta talk into the mic. That's the main thing.
I think you ought to have six.
Well, we, I think we should have one for each person.
Yeah.
I mean, because what, what we're, what the complaint is, is we have people that say they can't hear. And by us trying to skimp a few hundred dollars and not, we're still gonna have that same problem. So I'd say, get every, you know, we got nine people on the zoning plan, get every person a microphone and, you know, be done with it and you know, if we get to where we don't need that many, we're able to take some off or add a couple on later, yeah, we can do that, so. That's what I would, that's just my. You don't? Do you give, do you give government discounts?
Yeah, I think you're right, Dan, because I've talked to people that are older and they've never been physically to a commission meeting, but they watch us religiously on TV. And when they can't hear it, and old people have a problem, you know, a lot of times hearing, so.
And it will always come down to you, so they gotta get into the microphone.
Yeah.
And if we put a little better one here, maybe get a little better pickup gain. I realize all the people who come up here are conscious of the mics and this year to talk about their problem and their solution and such, so.
Dan, does that include that podium mic?
Yes, we're gonna get that one replaced too. And I would say, I would say, Madam Chairman, as we.
Projector out for now?
Yeah, well, I know, I think we need the projector. I don't think we need the camera system at this point.
Sure.
Uh, I, I guess we could decide who, what projector do we want, the cheaper one or the more expensive one?
What, is it laser, is that cheaper or more expensive?
Laser's more expensive.
Twenty-two hundred dollars more.
Yeah.
How much?
Twenty-two hundred.
Yeah, it's, it's fairly expensive, yes. It's got an extension there. So you guys, and we're not pushing you one way or the other, I'll be honest, it's no, it's, you know, my bad.
You'd have great results with either.
Yeah.
It's kind of if you want a future-proof with the laser or do you want to have recurring cost of maintenance going up and down, replacing lamps? Assuming you use it enough to have to do that a lot, so.
Or you move the lamp, let's say five, six years, you just decide we need a different projector anyway, now you can say, well, we need to buy the expensive one back then. I mean, it's, like I said, there's six and a half dozen of these. We just wanted to give you the options, you know, the tech, two technologies are there.
We're not pulling anything over your eyes, we're gonna be both of them.
How, how long, well, the, the laser one is pretty much foolproof, that's gonna last more so?
Yeah, we just got one in the high school theater a couple of years ago. That one was rated for seventy thousand hours. Uh, and that would be ten years of constant running-ish, is what they, you know, on business days.
Sure.
If you ran it every day.
He said the one with the bulbs, the bulbs burn out and need to be replaced.
Correct.
Occasionally. How mu- how much are the bulbs?
Uh, two to three hundred bucks.
Oh.
Yep.
And you're gonna get a lot of life out of, I'm gonna be honest, you're gonna get for a lot of life out of it.
What, what do you recommend to us? You're the expert.
Twenty years out of that bulb.
We will. Well, we have what, one meeting a week? And how often do we use the over-hit projector?
That's, that was the big question I had for you.
Not, not often.
All right.
I would go loud.
I recommend lamp.
Okay.
Yeah.
We could use it a lot more though.
Well, if we're getting GIS and we're doing it.
Four hours every meeting. If, if we have a meeting.
You'll throw on a few spare bulbs.
We have one meeting a week and that's on for four hours. A two thousand hour bulb is gonna be five-year life on that.
So I.
Um, the, the other thing with that projector, and I don't know if we built it into the cost here, but, oh, yeah, the HDMI extenders. So, uh, right now you're using VGA, that's a pretty low resolution cable to get up there. Uh, we cost out, I think, two of them. We, uh, the two would be one coming down to the podium and then one going to the back table. If you want to do just one, we can do that as well. But I, I would recommend going to HDMI. That gives you a higher resolution, a cleaner picture up there.
Yeah, we'd recommend that too, that would be good.
That'd be fine.
Okay.
But we'll, we'll start with one HDMI extended. Until I tell you need two.
And then we get a discount, right?
Well, we'll see.
Repeat costs. That's a dirty word.
Coupons are good.
All right, we'll, uh, work up a hard quote.
Oh, the audio mixer rack condition, we want to go with that into our
I got a couple more questions too.
Sure.
With the bulbs, is it gonna take a, a electrician to put them in or can we just put them ourselves?
No.
So those two extra bulbs you're gonna throw in for free won't be a problem?
I will give you a screwdriver. And a tutorial.
You see why car salesmen hate me?
I will find out what the cost of the, I will do this, though, I will find out what the cost of bulbs are. And I may just tell you, buy one now, have it your, because here's what you're gonna want. You're gonna want one in, in, in your, uh, pocket. Because it's gonna happen, it's gonna go out of the convenience time and you're not gonna have one.
Yep.
When you go back to school, we keep extra ones.
They're not gonna quit making these or something, are they?
Well.
Be obsolete after you buy it, that's how electronics are.
There are lots of secondhand source for bulbs, there's.
Yep, and the, the model we, we checked out is the same exact model as the laser, the housing. It's just the bulb place, replacement, so they're the same technology, the same model year, it's all pretty new. So you've got a good shelf life on it.
Do you have anything to add, Gary or?
No, I think that's the way to go. For as much as we're gonna be using it, but Don's right, I mean, we're, we're gonna certainly want to use it more down the line, but I think the bulbs will still be fine. That's what I've been accustomed to and they last a long time, so.
All right. Thanks for your time.
Of course, thank you.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item twenty-two, strategic planning. Is this the, um, you had sent a date out for quarterly meetings?
I did send a, a note out today that maybe February twelfth at ten o'clock I was looking at, if you wanted, that works for you all for the kickoff meeting, for the quarterly meetings. And, uh, just on that note real quick too, I'll just let you know that, um, one of the things we did for planning that since I've been here, we've had an issue with walking across the hall and spending a considerable amount of time doing packets and things. And, uh, so I worked with Register Deeds, Building Maintenance, uh, Veteran Services. And, uh, we all worked together to and decided that everybody was good with swapping machines. And so we took the little copier scanner out of our office and moved that across the hall for their faxes that they get. And we put the big copier now in our office, so we don't have to walk across the hall and, and spend a bunch of time over there. And, and everybody's happy. I appreciate their cooperation and, and, uh, I think it's gonna, plus it saved the county about forty-two hundred dollars from having to buy a new copier for a while, so, so I think it's a win-win for everybody.
Thank you. All right, so February twelfth, ten AM, it's a Wednesday.
What time were you thinking, Gary?
I was thinking ten o'clock, but we can certainly work around that.
Ten, well, to do, how long?
Oh, I'm guessing not more than a half hour, hour for this one, because it's just basically deciding all the groups get, will go off into their little groups to start working on tasks, so.
All right.
What, what is this called? It's called the?
Strategic planning.
So essentially this, the spreadsheet that was built with all of the goals identified and you went in and put your name by things that you're interested in. Now we're going to start following up on making sure tasks are actually being done, associated with the items that we have all volunteered for.
Could, could we start that a little early?
Sure. Nine thirty, nine?
Nine, nine thirty.
Nine thirty works.
Nine thirty.
Yep. Do we want to have, um, Greg Henderson come back or is he kind of done with that? Is it just on us now?
I think he just kind of handed it off to us.
Yep, so this will just be, uh,
Sounds good.
Following up on status reports and.
Can you send out a list of the final?
I did today with the, with the memo, so.
Okay. So our goal is to have that every quarter, so it's not overly cumbersome, but it's far enough apart, we're not wanting to forget what we're supposed to be focusing on.
And the little groups can get together as they need to to get the task done, so.
Okay. All right, thank you for that.
Thanks.
Twenty-three, public comment.
Sherry, I maybe I forgot to address some of Gary's things here. Tabby comment.
Okay. It's fine.
Just listening from, I didn't take it.
Oh, okay.
And I apologize for this again, but I failed, I'll get bombarded by emails tomorrow. But in there, um, Gary claimed I was tapping him, which I'm assuming again meant taping. I, I never have I taped a conversation here, an executive session, in any meeting I've ever been a part of in my whole entire life. I don't even know how I would tape on my phone. So I just want to let you know that I've never taped a conversation ever here on an executive session and I'm not aware of any of us doing that either. I don't know if that would be legal. My position it wouldn't, it's a confidential meeting we're having, so, sorry about that, I forgot to make a reference to that prior, so.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make a public comment? All right, public comment is closed. Commissioner updates, item twenty-four. Would anybody like to share, uh, updates?
I attended YAPG's quarterly meeting last week. Uh, they mainly, uh, uh, collected officers and, and took care of that. They're, uh, got one prospect, uh, I guess we individually didn't know about, uh, or don't know about, but, uh, they think it's a, a, a good prospect, uh, for a small business coming in.
Good.
Oh, this is not an update, but something I did last week. I drove to Sioux Falls on Tuesday. I attended the Mini Haha County Commission meeting. Um, one of the individuals had invited me a long time ago, and so I just had the opportunity to go up last Tuesday and, and, uh, sit through the, most of the meeting. And that was, that was the day with the refugees and the place was packed and they have, uh, an overflow room probably as big as this one with a great big monitor. And the sound was really great. It, you felt like you were right inside the commission. So I just kind of wanted to feel it out and see what, they got a huge building up there, if you've ever been there.
Seen it on TV.
They got a lot more people too.
Yeah. Dan?
I don't really have anything. I think I'm gonna be attending the Yankton Day, uh, event on the twenty-eighth in Pierre. Is anybody else going?
Yes.
So we probably need to have a quorum notification in the paper for, for that. I'm sure that's already being done. Um, and then I'm, I'm gonna attend on the fifth of February, a pipeline safety meeting in Vermillion.
Yeah, who's, who else is going to that on the fifth?
I'm planning on going.
Are you going, Gary?
I'm going.
Okay, anybody else?
You got me registered. Yep.
Okay.
See some of my old coworkers.
I've got nothing.
You've got nothing.
Nothing.
All right, a couple other dates. January twenty-fifth, which is Saturday, is the first ten AM Cracker Barrel for the legislature. Is anyone planning to attend?
I, I think I will.
So Gary, Don, Dan or Joe?
I'll be out of town.
I'm gonna be working the gun show.
What, what, which one, was that, the first one or was that the twenty, what?
Twenty-fifth.
Yeah.
It's on a Saturday.
So it's Saturday at ten o'clock. And I've got a soccer tournament, so I won't be there, so only two, so we probably don't need to notify that one. But we do January twenty-eighth is Yankton Day in Pierre. Did you send that one? So three of us are going there. Uh, we have our next ambulance task force, February third, which will be the Monday before the commission meeting. Uh, seven PM in this room. Um, and those are the only dates I have. Uh, I did get contacted by Nathan Johnson today. Um, the city is kind of gearing up for how to promote the census this year. Every ten years, it's important to count folks because that's what a lot of our funding is based off, so they asked how the county might be interested in participating in some function to get the word out. So I'll probably be following up with Nathan on that one, but otherwise, uh, anything else?
Yeah, um, another thing is, uh, everybody knows there's high potential for flooding and. And, um, working with emergency management, Paul is having some meetings, um, high level this week. And so, we're looking at within the next month or month and a half, um, just doing a little, uh, plan briefing on what, what we're planning on doing in the event of flooding. For those, those of you who don't know, uh, the county has gotten a sandbag machine. And so, we're working with the highway department to, um, they're doing a few modifications on that. So, I think that's a really good asset that we'll have for the community. Uh, I think it'll do several hundred, uh, um, sandbags an hour or maybe even more than that. But more information will be forthcoming on that, on, uh, what we're doing to prepare for flooding this spring.
Thank you. At this time, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for a litigation pursuant to South Dakota Codified Law one dash twenty-five dash two subpart three.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to go into executive session for the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, we are now in executive session at eight-ten. I would entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to go back into regular session?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, no, I was just.
I, oh, sorry.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, we're now in regular session. Sorry for the confusion on that, Gary. Um, items for next meeting? Oh, no action will be taken as a result of the executive session.
If we can get the sound system quote on there.
Okay. And we've got sheriff's quarterly report.
Were we gonna?
Brian's Register of Deeds.
Were we gonna have the five-year plan?
That's right here, my finger's right on it, the update to the five-year highway plan.
And then we need, um, planning and zoning members.
Yep, filling planning and zoning vacancies, possibly moving to seven instead of nine. Uh, we need a public hearing on the zoning ordinance reading. The alternative HRD should be here. I don't know if we wanna schedule town halls for this year.
I've been thinking about that, I, I think we need to, um. Part with the ambulance task force isn't quite going out into the community like the, I kinda use the highway task force as, as, in lieu of the, of the, um, town hall meetings, ambulance, we're probably not going out into the community as much.
No.
I need to do one in Utica, um, I just don't, it's, it's tough finding a, a time that the building is open, you know, to do it. I guess we can, um, certainly bring that up.
Okay, so maybe we'll put it on there, everybody think about that. Um, budget from twenty nineteen, of, all of the final numbers, I think we, we need to have that report.
That, that's for the one I talked about.
Yeah, it is, yep. And I think, and then we will need an executive session for personnel. I've got one item for there. Other than that, I think that covers all mine.
And you're gonna have about the holidays, um, next meeting?
That'll be part of the, the, um, A, Alternative HRD, the human resource.
I would like to add that we consider Veterans Day as a holiday, so we have a discussion about that. Yeah, but it's a paid one, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Yeah, we get it off already.
Yeah.
Yep.
Anything else? All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.